I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First up is to do a quick roll call.
Um, yes. Chair Del Corso.
Here, present.
Vice Chair Strauss.
Good evening.
Supervisor Piper.
Here.
Supervisor Beck.
Here.
And Supervisor Hargel is not present.
Okay, excellent. Uh, let's see. Oh, I missed this part. Moment of silence. I did not see this tonight. Um, we have one of our former supervisors, Bob Neff, who was a soldier in Afghanistan for 20 years.
I'm sorry.
Oh, what? I'm sorry.
Uh, Bob Neff passed away as a former supervisor.
Yes, did I not say that? Former supervisor?
Yes, but he wasn't a.
He was in Vietnam.
I'm sorry, what?
He was in Vietnam.
Oh, okay.
This is for multiple things.
Okay, I got you. Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm just reading and not doing this, I apologize. Um, he was, Bob Neff has passed away. He was a former supervisor, um, in Vietnam, thank you. Uh, 20 years from the 9/11 attacks, I'm sorry, I don't understand what that means.
I think we're listing, um, it's a, it's a moment of silence for Bob Neff, for the soldiers who lost their lives in Afghanistan.
Uh-huh.
For 20 years from 9/11 attacks and suicide awareness month.
This is a terrible way to introduce a moment of silence and I apologize for this.
You know what, we're all human, everybody makes a mistake.
Um, let me try one more time. We are having a moment of silence for multiple items this evening. One of our former supervisors, Bob Neff, for the soldiers in Afghanistan, for the 9/11 20-year attack anniversary, if you want to call it as such, and for Suicide Awareness Month. So if you could all please bow your heads, close your eyes for a moment of silence, thank Thank you very much for taking that time. We will proceed on to the opening announcements for this evening. Denise?
Um, some of the same ones as always. We are being recorded live on CNET's YouTube channel. Uh, the link is available on our agenda. Uh, we're also, uh, if you've signed up for the Zoom link, you will receive a, an email with a link to watch this as well. Um, we're still asking for township residents, uh, email addresses. If you've signed up in the past, uh, you might not be on our current list, please click HalfMoonTWP.us and the Contact Us button. If you did not receive this evening's agenda in an email, you are not on our list. Um, we're still always looking for volunteers for different committees, boards, and even events. If you're interested in any of these items, please contact me, or you can go on our website. And then, last but not least, an executive session regarding personnel was held August 26th from 8:02 PM until 9:03 PM.
Okay. Next up are citizens' comments, so if anyone that is present online, or if we received any ahead of time, this is the time for citizen comments about items which are not already on the agenda.
I might like to say something.
Sure, you come on up.
Oh, do I have?
Yes, please.
The microphone's up here.
Yes.
Oh, this, this is the microphone?
Yes, random is okay.
No, no, I just wanted to say that.
Sorry, can you state your name?
State your name. Sharon Ravansik, citizen of Half Moon Township. I live on, at 143 Susan Lane. I just wanted to say that we had our first annual, um, Half Moon Township Community Meet and Greet this past weekend, and we had several organizations that attended, and I wanted to bring it to the Board of Supervisors because hopefully it lays a foundation for us as a community to get to know each other a little bit better, and I think the more we get to know each other, the better neighbors we are. And I really think is evidenced by the local Stormstown, and I know Half Moon Township is not just Stormstown, but like the Stormstown Facebook group, everybody helps each other out with, like, trees down on this road, or what's going on with, with that over there, or I, I need just some help. And so, there were a lot of local organizations, from the Game Commission, to Sklo Public Library, to the therapeutic riding horses. Port Matilda came up with their new brush truck, and that was really impressive. Um, they still have to get like running boards and stuff, stuff on it, but I think it's, it, it looks really good and sharp and, and, you know, wildfire season, they said, is coming up. To my surprise, I didn't realize it was such a high fire danger and fall. But I just wanted to say that it, it went really well, and I hope in the future that, like, more of that can be done, and just starting to lay the foundation for that in Half Moon.
Absolutely.
And that's just all I wanted to say. So much.
Thank you.
I just want to echo Sharon's, uh, comments on that as well. That was a really nice event, and we had a dog show with that, and, uh, Bob's dog, um, was there.
Really?
Yes, and it was, it was a very good event, a lot of good neighbors and a lot of good people. Uh, we're hoping that we can keep it going and, and have.
Grow it from there.
Yes.
Absolutely. Wonderful.
It was, it was a really good time. It was a blast.
All right, any other citizen comments? Yeah, and I think I asked nothing ahead of time? We didn't get any comments ahead of time?
Nothing ahead of time, nothing online, anything on?
Nothing.
Um, no, we're good there.
Nope, okay. We'll move along then to the approval of the agenda. And one item I just wanted to, to move up, under the new business, Sharon is actually here to give an update, uh, on Sklo Library Report for our circulation. I wanted to move that to the beginning of the new business, so letter A. So instead of at the end of new business, we can move her up to the beginning. That was the only edit that I wanted to make to the agenda.
I move that we approve tonight's agenda with the, uh, aforementioned, uh, change.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Dave. Um, any, oh, yeah, any comments, questions? Nope, okay, motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We will move along then. Um, next up is the approval of the minutes from our August 26th meeting. If I could entertain a motion?
Move that we approve the minutes of August 26th.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any questions, suggestions, edits?
I have none.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, ayes have it. Next up is our consent agenda, which is a collection of items under one agenda that is, uh, to pay bills for August 21st through September 3rd, um, paying out of the general fund in the amount of $36,777.65, and in the fire protection fund in the amount of $16,830.80, and also approval of the bills for the period of September 4th through the 17th, general fund in the amount of $868, Parks and Rec Fund in the amount of $2,999.62. If there is anything specific out of those bills that you want to pull out, we need to, um, have a motion to do that individually. If you're okay with everything under there, we can just have one motion for the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda for tonight's meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll start it.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions, discussion?
Let's just hope they don't misplace our check over.
I actually, I can provide you an update on that, actually.
They, uh, they did find it.
Yes, they did. Um, it was returned. Uh, our bank ended up flagging that check. Uh, long story short, next month, we'll be presenting checks to, um, we're gonna have them, we're gonna collect all the checks from the fire company and just issue one check that's done for the year.
Gotcha.
So we don't have this problem.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
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 Okay, ayes have it. We have no old business on the list, so we'll move along to the new business, and since we edited the agenda, Sharon Ravansik, right? Am I saying that?
Right, Ravansik.
Ravansik, okay. I'm making sure I put the accent on the right area.
I can pull down my mask, right?
Yes, you can.
It's like a little.
Yes. All right. Let me just pull up my notes here for a second. And Sharon is the Half Moon Township representative to the Sklo Library, and she's just gonna provide a report for us. I am. Yes, thank you. So, um... Sklo is doing very well. That's the short answer, getting back. And the theme here is getting back to the Sklo you know, and we all know what happened with the pandemic. And Lisa Collins is there, and she's the new library director that just, just came on there, so hopefully that she'll, hi Lisa, hopefully she'll help me in where I am sure to falter. Um, beginning September 8th, the library opened to patrons and visitors seven days a week. That was back to the old, um, fall hours, opening on Sunday, and Sunday is always, it's from 1 to 5, and those are always times families have with their kids, and maybe it's a little more relaxed on rainy days. Um, parents really look forward to getting back into a public library, especially with the children's room and the mix of programs the library is offering. Right now, what is missing are the toys and the beloved train table, because right now, you know, it's hard to keep a two-year-old or a three-year-old from putting toys and trains and stuff in their mouths. Um, so hopefully, you know, as Sklo goes back, those things will get figured out. Right now, priority is given to in-person programs that help children, including programs that are partnered with, um, Strawberry Fields, to support parents in identifying delays and in meeting, um, developmental milestones in children. And I'll say it again, and say it again, and say it again, that I will always be an advocate for public libraries, for adults, and also for children. As a society and a community, we must instill the love of learning in our children young. We can't make it scary, we can't make it threatening, we have to make it welcoming. And what better place to do it is a children's room in a public library with the type of children's, uh, librarians that there are at Sklo that understand that. Um, but there are also, aside from the, um, projects and the, and the progress that's being made at Sklo downtown, um, Sklo is working with Way Fruit Farm to install a booklocker so books can be dropped off at Way Fruit Farm, because one of the big things is, it's no, you know, sometimes in, in snow and rain, and just, you know, if you're elderly or don't, you know, the distance can be somewhat daunting to drive out to the library, you know, if the lot's full, find a place to park, get your books, and bring them back here to Half Moon. So by installing fruitlockers at the fruit farm, you know, that's gonna cut down a lot of, of traveling, you know, maybe even the price of gas, honestly, is a hesitation to some people. I know, like, if I have to go back for some milk, I have to really think about whether that's happening or not. And, um, the pilot, you know, it's a pilot program, but, you know, Half Moon, just because we're further out, is not, not being considered and thought of. And also, um, they're working right now on a bookmark that's going to be given to all Half Moon Township residents, that's gonna list out all the services that are available. And, um, the idea, and that, that program's being pioneered, um, pioneered with Half Moon and with Ferguson. And again, the idea is, um, you're gonna highlight the essential resources that, um, a library like Sklo would have to residents of Half Moon, and really, as, um, like, as a reminder, you know, a public library touches people in so many different ways and with the programs that they have, and, um, there's a library by mail service, like, if you are housebound and you cannot get out of the library, or get out to the library, Sklo will send you your materials, and a lot of people don't know that. And, you know, a quote from a 95-year-old patron said, "I am now 95, you have worn my life and my wives for decades." You know, there, there are people who truly become housebound as they get elderly, that, you know, like, my grandmother was fearful of falling, didn't want to be around other people. You know, you just age and, and, you know, let's face it, you know, when, when books go and reading goes, it's just a detriment to what your life and quality there becomes. And so, this mail service is so important, Sklo is the one offering it. It's paid for by the Central Pennsylvania Library District, of which Sklo is a district center. And, you know, you don't have to be permanently homebound, you could be temporarily homebound, you know? I could fall and break my hip tomorrow, and I could still utilize this service. Um, if you want to sign up for this service, go to the website, call the library, somebody's gonna help you. Somebody's not gonna leave you hanging, and that goes with anything. And speaking of which, it's, um, Library Card Sign-Up Month, it happens every September. Um, and there's a proclamation right here in Center County, and, um, officials gathered on September 14th to mark the occasion, and it says, "Proclamation 28 of 2021 notes. A library card gives students the tools to succeed in the classroom and provides people of all ages opportunities to pursue their dreams and passions." And again, I will say it again, not only to children, but in our country, we only guarantee education up until the age of 18. After that, you're on your own. I mean, you could, you could go to college, you could go to community college, you could go to trade school, none of it's guaranteed. Public library is guaranteed, whether it's a hobby level, whether it's a professional level, whether it's for enjoyment, whether it's for professional advancement, it, it is guaranteed, everything else is not. And then, right now, there are fall activity calendars available, you can go in and get a hard copy, or you can download it. Half Moon residents, you know, you could go online and, and download it. Interlibrary loan has started back up, and, um, if you, and you can, I've been inside the library to browse, and I can't tell you how freeing that is, just to walk up and down the rows of shelves again, but if you are uncomfortable coming in, if you have an immune disorder that makes you compromised, if you are uncomfortable in any way, you can still do the doorbell service, and they will bring the books out to you. Circulation numbers have been, um, have returned to pre-pandemic levels, and if not, they're pretty close, and I think Lisa would have that exact number if she's there and can answer.
Sure, so we have seen, uh, lots and lots of recovery in many of our collections to pre-pandemic levels, um, and I just pulled up, uh, the latest in August, Half Moon Township was looking at being, uh, at, for the percent of circulation in the center region was 2.76% of overall circulation, um, and that was at a level of 1,086. Uh, so we're really excited that we are seeing those pre-pandemic levels start to rise again, especially during the summer with all of the summer reading that was happening. It was really great to go to some of those shelves and see that, you know, there wasn't a book in sight in particular series for some of those kids' series that are so popular. And that's exactly, like, as a librarian, what makes your heart sing. It's like, you know, the library books aren't supposed to be in the library, they're supposed to be out in homes and being enjoyed by individuals, and that's what we're starting to see again. Um, in addition to the circulation, we're also seeing a return to people coming into the building. Uh, between our normal numbers, we're 600 to 800 people a day, and we are starting to see days again that are hitting that 600 to 700 mark, and that's really exciting because it means that I think people are returning to their routine of coming to the library. Uh, but as Sharon said, we're also completely and totally, uh, committed to being where our patrons are and looking for ways that we can serve people where they feel most comfortable, which is why those doorside services are also available, as well as our robust electronic services.
Excellent. That's all I have to say. I don't.
Yeah. I was gonna ask about the specific things that might be benefiting Half Moon, but you already addressed those, so I think that's wonderful. Thank you for your passion, Sharon, around the topic, and you also, Lisa.
I can get going on, on public library.
Don't get going on that, I have a couple of questions.
Oh, right. Oh, I don't, okay. Let me see.
Just to clarify, on the, the, the books by mail, I think you called it?
Yes.
Um, is that postage paid both ways, or would you have to pay the postage to return?
It is.
It is.
Yeah, it is. So what happens is, um, the individual works with, uh, the community member that's interested in receiving the service, and they let her know what they're interested in receiving. She puts together a zippered mailbag, and it has the postage for the return of the items on the other side, so the patron just flips over that postage return and puts it, you know, in the mailbox, and it comes back to us, and then we get the next bag out to them. We do have some individuals that have been using the homebound program, uh, for upwards of a decade. Um, the gentleman whose quote, uh, that Sharon, uh, shared with you, uh, he and his wife had been using the homebound service for many, many years, um, and it's, uh, it's wonderful. One of our adult services librarians runs that, and, uh, she is absolutely committed to being their librarian, making sure they get on the list for the things that they're interested in. Um, so it's really a very, very personalized service with a librarian that works with the individual.
That's great. Um, the, the Way Fruit Farm booklockers, spectacular idea. Um, the idea is to make it easy, you know, and we are pretty far out from the library.
Well, I, I don't think learning, right, I don't think learning or access to books and other materials and services should be hard to get to.
Yeah, exactly.
Because the more barriers you put up in front of them, the harder it's.
Exactly. If we can bring everything out here, just like everyone has close access to in town.
Because the, the truth of the matter is, every barrier you put up, you're gonna lose some people.
Yes. Um, I also like the idea of your, um, your bookmarks with the listing of services, that's really good, because, I mean.
Because I don't think everybody knows, like, all the services.
Yeah, sure, and, and it's just, our tax dollars pay, go through the library.
That's for sure, yeah.
Let everybody know, this is what your services are that are available to you. You know, these are free, or, you know, however you want to state that, but this is what is available to you, take advantage of it. So, um...
And I hope that those are gonna be available not just for Half Moon Township and Ferguson Township.
That's correct. What we're doing is we're piloting it with, uh, Half Moon and Ferguson, um, to kind of, you know, just connect people with their local government, um, as well. We think that that's really something that we can help with. We know that many times when someone comes to the desk to get a library card, and we ask them what township or borough they live in, they don't know. They just say, "Oh, State College." Well, that's the city, not, you know? And so, we do have an opportunity, I think, um, to help people understand how they're connected to their local government. It's like, "Oh, you're a Half Moon Township resident," or "You're a Patton Township resident, and these are the services that your municipality is providing to you, um, and, you know, your municipality provides support to the library that you're using right now." We want to make it sure that people really have an appreciation and a connection to the amazing things that are happening out in all the townships, um, so that we can help them navigate that, just like we do with any sort of reference question. Uh, we want our community to be engaged, and we want them to be connected with each other.
Thank you so much.
I just have one more question, um, regarding, uh, the, uh, increase to pre-pandemic levels of the, the checkouts. Um, eBooks, is that, I, what was the effect of the pandemic on, on eBooks? Or was there any? I, it's easy to download a book, you know, again, we take away the barriers. Um, I'm curious as, if, if that increased exponentially?
It did, it really did, and one of the things that, um, we have seen is that, you know, we really shifted a huge amount of our material budget lines, uh, to all of the electronic resources, especially during the stay-at-home orders, uh, to really try and meet all of those needs that we were seeing. We saw huge increases, you know, 200, 300% in some collection areas, both in eBooks, e-audiobooks, downloadable magazines, downloadable music, and downloadable movies. Uh, really, people were looking for, to their library to learn something. Our language, uh, materials went out tremendously, people were learning languages. Um, we also saw increases on the usage of many of our business resources as people were starting to plan, you know, what is going to be that next stage in my life, and am I going to start a small business? We saw increases in that. Now, we have seen in the last few months, um, a shift a little bit away from some of the electronic resources, still at very high levels, but a little bit of a shift, and people coming in and saying, "I'm so glad I can just not be on a screen right now." You know, "I just want to snuggle with my kiddo and read a book together. I want to be able to touch something, to feel something, and I want to be able to experience that, um, that love of reading in a different way." Um, so we're seeing increases in our DVD collection, our physical DVD collection's starting to go out again, very popular. Um, we are seeing increases in, uh, the children's materials, and we're expecting increases in many of our adult areas as well. So, physical is definitely, it's kind of coming alive as everybody's kind of, you know, we're a little zoomed out, so I think that, uh, people are, are definitely looking for, for some of those physical materials again.
Sure. Wonderful. Thank you so much for the great report tonight.
Thank you. Nice to see you, Lisa. Thank you, Sharon.
May I ask you guys any questions?
If I may, just one other thing, I highly encourage each elected official, if Lisa's willing to do this, which I can't imagine she wouldn't be, uh, she gave me a great tour of Sklo, and I was very unaware of all of the services that were provided.
When I got my tour five years ago, it was the same, I was like, this isn't, I was, it's sad to just call it a library. It's not the right terminology to use.
If I come down for a tour, can I drag my wife along? She's an educator, she would enjoy it.
Yes, I would be happy to do that. The backstage tours are the best, because you get to see all the things behind the scenes too, so.
Great.
Wonderful. Thank you, Lisa. We'll contact you.
You're welcome. And I wanted to thank you for inviting us to the, uh, community get-together. I had the best time, and I so badly want to ride in that big vehicle that, uh, that they brought along, that was amazing. So, thank you again for the invitation, we appreciate it. Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks.
Thank you, Sharon. All right, wonderful news, wonderful news. Um, okay, now onto the rest of the new business. We have, uh, an item to approve the minimum municipal obligation for a Half Moon Township non-uniform pension plan for the year 2022, and there's a memo associated.
Yes, there is a memo and a hash worksheet.
Yep.
Um, so each year, um, according to Act 205 of 1984, we have to have an approval of the minimum municipal obligation, uh, for payment of the pension plan. We do receive some funds for this. Um, we just received actually the 2021 unit value of $4,797.28, basically 28 cents. Um, so this is basically a calculation of estimated W-2 wages, and, um, we, it's the township's obligation to pay this amount to cover the pension costs. So if you look on the back of your worksheet, you'll see the MMO for 2022 is $36,876.
And I can, uh, and without recalling, is there, do you happen to know what it was last year, or is this about the same?
Uh, this is actually lower. So I had sent out to the board, we received our Act 205, Act, I can't say the word, act.
Actuary?
Yeah, that val-.
Is that it?
Yes, thank you, I, I struggle with that one. Um, but we actually, our pension, if you remember, we agreed to put an additional $2,000 into our pension because we were underfunded and in a distressed municipality stage of two. We received a report that, um, our valuation from the actuary is, uh, as of 2021, we went from 66% to, I believe it's 84% funded, um, and we are in a one distress score, which means we're not distressed. Uh, there's no requirements for us to do any action to continue that, but we did agree to do the additional $2,000. So this is actually less because we're better funded.
Excellent. Okay, uh, I'll entertain a motion, then we can get discussion if we have any?
Um, this needs a motion, because it sounds like it's, it's something that we have to do anyway, I mean, didn't we already?
It must be approved.
It has to be approved every year?
Yes.
Seems kind of clunky, but okay.
That's.
Yeah, I know.
Government.
Was there a motion? Uh, I move that, uh, we approve the, uh, minimum municipal obligation, the MMO, for Half Moon Township Non-Uniform Pension Plan for the plan year of 2022.
Is there?
Second and for discussion.
Okay, second, and then let's open to discussion.
Uh, you said about the $2,000 extra we agreed to pay into that, is that in there or is that not in there?
That is not in here, but, um, the reason our number, I think our number from last year, if you give me just one second, um...
Can I, I'll speak, and then you can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think we, it was to put that in for this year to get us out of that distress state, and so this is for next year, so unless we want to put more in, but we, we don't need to, so.
We're behind it all, that's, I guess that's what my question is.
Going into next year, doesn't sound like we will.
We're not technically behind, but we're still not fully funded, so it's still good practice.
Well, I would, I would rather get to the fully funded part as soon as possible.
I'm with you. So, the calculation from last year was 41,737. Uh, this year's calculation is 36,876. So, the, the overall valuation, of course, increased, which means our MMO So, the, the overall valuation, of course, increased, which means our MMO, our obligation decreased because we're not at a stage where we're in distress and there were better returns. So, this is the amount we're gonna pay in 2022, is the 36. However, in the budget, I still have an additional 2,000 budgeted that will go over because we had committed to doing that for the next five years. So, that next year will be year two of putting in that additional two, which will help increase our overall funded status in the next actuary real report.
So, if we wanna make sure, if you wanna get closer to that fully funded, we can discuss that during the budget?
Yep.
All right.
Is that okay with you?
I don't like that.
Is there anything that we would do with this?
At this time?
Other than approve it?
To address potentially getting to that hundred percent?
This is the calc- this is what it is.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a calculation. This is more of.
Them or not?
What's that?
Are we sending money to those people or not? That's the question I have. If we're sending money, why wouldn't we send the extra 2,000 to pay our obligation?
We, we can, but this is the minimum municipal obligation that we have to pay.
Right.
So, we, in the budget.
Doesn't mean we can't give more at the time that we're writing the charter.
Okay, well, I just didn't wanna get locked into anything and not pay it.
We can pay more. This is, this is like, uh, when you get your credit card bill and they have the minimum payment due.
Yeah.
So, are we making a, a vote to, to disperse the funds to pay that bill or not?
No. This is just saying, this is, the board is approving the calculation for the minimum municipal obligation for next year. We don't even pay this until next year.
Yeah, this then becomes a budget item for next year.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't see the point in doing it now, but.
It's required by law.
Whatever.
Process, process. Okay, so that wasn't it. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, ayes have it. Get that taken care of and put in the budget. My glasses. Um.
Our favorite topic.
Our favorite topic. Hopefully, this is, this'll be easy for us, I think. Trick or treat night. So, we, um.
Last year.
We're fine. I, I think it's fine. Uh, Halloween is October 31st. So, procl- uh, pro- the proclamation for me is Halloween is October 31st.
Uh, I completely agree. Halloween is October 31st and, yeah, and I think even this year, um, all the other municipalities of, of the COG have declared or are going to declare the 31st.
They already did.
And, yeah, so, I mean, let's just keep it standard. I, I get the idea that maybe we should, um, let just say, not say anything about it and let the citizens, but that, I think I read in the memo and I completely agree. It, it's hard to then coordinate proper, um, safety response with, uh, you know, EMTs, fire department, things like that. So, we do need to kinda make an official day for the municipality to follow.
And I would be thoroughly happy in the future if a resident group wants to take ownership of this.
Sure.
Uh, because I really, we don't have, um, fire and police that we need to coordinate.
Well.
There is no action.
Not police, but fire. Um, and they're on the other side of the mountain and they have a very large.
Sure.
Uh, coverage area, so.
Sure.
You know, and not to mention, I just do feel more comfortable with, if you put it out into the public, um, sphere saying this is our official Halloween day, and you can then maybe even, these are things that are just popping into my head, you can post it on a big message board on the roads to remind people, hey, you're just gonna have children walking around, that kind of thing.
We can do that regardless if the township supervisors make that call or if residents make that call.
True, true.
Um, I am, I understand that the, they picked a rain date of November 1. I, I would leave that up to the residents. But that's my opinion. If people wanna go out when it's raining, go out when it's raining. It's up to you. So, I'm not super in favor of trying to change dates of things and who says if it rains, is it raining hard enough to change the date, whatever? I, I don't know why we have to make that call for the residents. I would rather, if the residents wanna take their kids out, they can take their kids out.
Venus Sunday. And I, I would rather make it just from six to eight. That way, people may be able to get some food stuffed down their stomachs before the munchkins show up.
I'm also, and this is again, I don't have children. I, I don't wanna make this call for people that do have children. If they wanna go from six to eight, I'm fine with them going from six to eight. It is.
Their parents will be so thrilled when they get their chocolate that they'll be, kids will be bouncing off the walls. Probably two hours is enough time.
I believe the recommendation was originally made because we're not as densely populated, right? So, um, the idea was it gives people more time to walk in between different homes. But I will gladly make the suggestion that, um, the COG in the future, when they make the proclamation for the day, just keep it the same day and time.
Well, it wasn't the COG, it was us who did that. We are the ones that set it for 5:30, 8:30, not the general, not the COG.
Yeah, we had a little bit different than what the COG did every year.
Oh, do you, do you wanna keep that?
Time. Is it already out there?
It, I mean, through the COG, is it already out there? Through the COG, it is already out there. That was already approved by the COG.
I'd say we stay consistent with the COG.
Let's stay consistent.
One message.
Yeah.
All our kids go to the same school. We don't need to be confusing.
5:30 to 8:30.
All right, next year, I'd like to shorten that up.
I'm fine.
If it was a weekday, I'd feel differently, but Sunday is like family time for a lot of people.
I think that's a football game issue too.
Again.
It's a Sunday, obviously.
No, it's Saturday.
Oh, yeah, when there is a football game, it is a problem for the municipalities in town.
Sure. Um, I'm fine changing it to six to eight next year, since it's kind of already established. Let's keep it the way it is. Um, but again, I, I'm happy for any resident group to take ownership of deciding and, and communicating because, um, it, yeah, it has caused some issue in the past and I don't wanna have people wondering, can, can we go out? Can we not? Just, it's a, it's a Halloween fun evening.
They don't give you any candy. It's not trick or treating.
Right, yeah. So, um, so we have to make this proclamation, right? To establish Sunday, October 31st, 2021, from 5:30 to 8:30 PM as Half Moon Township's trick or treat night. I don't, I, I, I kinda wanna leave off the rain date and just leave it at that.
Yeah, let's not do that.
Okay, good. We'll end it there.
Okay.
October 31st.
Okay with that.
Is that a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Whoever we want.
Second, get it over with.
I just, my only reservation is just, I'm knowing what happened a few years ago and if we don't have, again, I'm not necessarily against not making the rain date, but, um, I'm just anticipating blowback if it rains the night before, so.
If residents wanna reschedule and they, you know, Stormstown Neighbor Facebook page is a great page to like coordinate things. Again, we are not taking any action related to this. All we're doing is saying, this is a day to go out and collect, get candy.
It's not even a government holiday, so.
No. So, uh, if, if folks wanna change that and do something on their own, that, more power to you. Okay, so we have the proclamation for October 31st, 5:30 to 8:30, uh, and we have a second. Any other discussion? No rain date.
No rain date.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. If any residents have any other thoughts, please speak up. We would be happy to turn that responsibility over to a resident group.
They go over for Halloween week, Halloween month?
Yes.
Get it out of our hands. We don't care.
Yes. All right, let's move along to economic development opportunity with Center County Airport Authority. So, yes.
Okay.
Give us some foundation here.
Um, the Center County Commissioners received ARPA funds, of course, as did we as a municipality. The Center County Commissioners met with the, uh, Center County Airport Authority and had discussions about possible ways to increase, uh, some economic development opportunities that they had. And one of the ideas was to have, um, 12 flights per week direct from State College to Charlotte, North Carolina. The Commissioners were able to get a determination from their solicitor that this was an allowable expense as a tourism option under the, um, ARPA fund guidance for the final interim rule. Michael Pipe, one of the Commissioners, reached out to Half Moon Township and asked if we would be, uh, if we would consider putting, uh, $10,000 into this pool to incentivize American Airlines to establish this direct flight. I reached out to our solicitor to find out if this was something that we could use our ARPA funds for. And, um, Zach had recommended that this is not something that we could consider because it doesn't directly deal with, uh, the, our township and the loss of revenues to the township or somehow the impacts of COVID-19. As such, we still have the opportunity to, um, consider a donation of 10,000 or whatever you would like that we can use general fund monies for. Now, if the, uh, American Airlines does not want to establish this, Half Moon wouldn't be on the hook for any of the money. But if this is something that the Commissioners can provide as part of the package to, uh, American Airlines, they would like some inclusion to have some buy-in from the local municipalities as well.
And I'm not sure if everybody saw, but remind me, Patton Township, I think, is the only one that I know for sure.
Patton did 12.5. I think State College is in for 25. Harris did none and Ferguson. I don't remem- Ferguson, I don't know if they agreed to it. They had a meeting, I believe, Monday.
Did you say Harris did none?
Harris did none.
Okay.
Is there some need that Half Moon Township has to fly to Charlotte, North Carolina? I mean, not that I haven't been there and it's nice and everything, but.
It's beautiful, but yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, um, that particular area. I mean, it is near.
Well, I, I have gotten there without this.
Well.
At University Park.
I, I personally, I, when I even first read this, when you sent out the memo, what, a week ago, I, I couldn't get behind it because, I mean, we're not exactly the tourist, um, destination spot for folks who are flying in from anywhere.
Yeah.
Uh, necessarily from Charlotte, North Carolina. Um, I, I appreciate the Commissioners' efforts in trying to bring tourism to the area, but this is more for college township, college borough, Patton, yeah, Patton Township. The places with all this commercial activity, um, I don't think we need to spend 10,000 on this, even if there's a chance we would get it back.
The ask was 10. We could put whatever we want.
Yeah, but even so, I, I don't think we need to put anything into it, so.
I'm in agreement.
And if I could just, um, add to some of Denise, Denise's comments in the memo, I wanted to note too, there's, we've been getting a number of questions from our municipal clients about, hey, can we use this? Can we use our ARPA funds for this or for that? And, uh, the US Treasury Department is, has issued, and this is noted in the memo, an interim final rule that contains a lot of guidance on, on those very questions. But it's anticipated that there will be a final, final rule that's gonna be issued hopefully sometime in the fall that will contain more, uh, more specific guidance on some of these questions. So, my, my answer to Denise when she posed this question wasn't necessarily, no, you cannot. It's, it's more, um, based on the guidance we have at this point. And without additional facts, um, that could maybe support the fact that this would respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts, which frankly, I'm not sure that there's really a way they could do that. But, you know, may, maybe they, if the facts were that, that the pandemic caused the loss of, of flights coming in and out, that they, they needed to use this to attract, um, you know, American Airlines to, to kind of respond to the negative economic impacts that were happening. May- maybe there would be an argument there, but absent those facts, I think this time, there's just, there's just not enough guidance that says that this would be an allowable use of, of the ARPA fund. So, I'd be interested to see what the county, uh, solicitor's reasoning is for, for that, but it's not really your, i- if, if you don't think it's worth, uh, committing at this time, I think, I, I, I guess it doesn't really matter. But all that to say, at some point in time, we may get more guidance from the Treasury Department that may ultimately say that, you know, to this very question, this type of, you know, airline expansion, yea or nay. But at the moment, we don't really have that, and I think with the facts, we do have the answer is probably not likely.
Yeah, and I don't think we are missing anything by not having these flights, so. Yep. Okay, sorry, no.
Before we continue, I just wanna note that, um, Salzman Hughes is, uh, somebody that we can use to determine the appropriate use of funds.
Excellent.
For the ARPA. I know a lot of other municipalities have hired other specialists to come in and help with that. Um, but the Salzman Hughes is able to give us guidance on that, so.
Because this didn't exist till somebody just made it up a few months ago, so.
No specialists in that?
And they're still making it up now.
Thank you for doing that for us, Zach.
Absolutely. And, um, and if, if I may, Denise, I don't know if we had, if you and I had spoken yet about, uh, the revenue loss calculation.
No, we shouldn't.
So, so that, that's one thing we've, we've been giving guidance on. Something that we don't do, but that most accounting firms can do is provide you with a, with a clear accounting of what your revenue loss, uh, calculation is. So, wha- with respect to the ARPA funds, there's a number of specific criteria that the statute says you can use it for this, you can use it for that, you can use it for this. Then there's another category that says it, basically, you can use it for general municipal services in an amount that's equal to the, the revenue that you lost because of the pandemic. And without going into, uh, the weeds too much on it, essentially, it looks at your 2019 numbers and your 2020 numbers and, and says, did, did you lose revenue? And, um, pretty much everybody's lost revenue in some way, shape, or form, a- and the Act even, even builds in a 4.1% buffer. So, if, if you, if you didn't lose a dime in revenue under this revenue loss calculation category, there's still funds that can be allocated in a much more general sense than just those specifically enumerated uses that the statute provides. So, a number of municipal clients of ours have, have asked their, their, um, their accounting firm or some accounting firm in the area to provide them with, basically do the math and crunch the numbers and provide us with that number. Um, so that's something I wanted to mention because I know a lot of municipal clients have, have done that. Just because the governing body and the staff may feel, we'd, we'd rather have, uh, you know, somebody come in and perform that rather than put that, put that on staff, that hopefully we get the number right, so.
Excellent.
I just wanted to throw that out there.
So, I actually did those calculations and, yeah, and I, it's now that we plan on appointing a different, uh, firm for accounting, I'm gonna reach out to them if that's okay, uh, because our 2019 numbers are massively inflated due to the park loan and grant that was.
Yep.
So, our numbers look like we can put all of the money that we received into the general fund for lost revenues when we do the calculations. So I need to find out what the guidance is when we look, if we take those numbers out, it's quite different.
Right.
Um, but if we're able to use those numbers in the calculation, we literally have all of it as lost revenue.
Okay, interesting.
So, I can get some more guidance on that, but, yes.
Lovely.
So, a, a little piece of this moving on.
Yes.
Cause this is a very good transition to something that we can discuss. In the 2021 budget, the board did not include any donation for economic development that they have in the past. We did receive, of course, an invoice, which the, which happens every year regardless, um, for supporting Economic Development Partnership for Center County for a thousand dollars for the 2021 year. I didn't know if the board would like to consider paying this, even though it wasn't a line item in the budget specifically for the 2021 year.
Uh, since we did not budget it, we decided to take it out, I personally would say no.
Yeah, I agree.
It would be a no for me.
Yeah.
If we, we say, we worked hard on that budget to figure out how to save money and we need to stick to it.
So, we're gonna say, thank, thank you, but no, thank you.
Yep, I agree.
Thank you, but no, thank you. All right.
Doesn't mean we can't revisit anything else that wouldn't have necessarily been in the budget, but that one, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, let's move along to, the next item on the agenda is authorization to consolidate all open space funds and establish a new checking and money market savings with First National Bank.
Yes.
So, currently, the open space preservation funds are at two separate banks. We have a operating account and a, what I would call a savings account. And, um, right now, the, I can't remember which one's which. Pliggett has the.
Open space preservation.
Yes, that is, uh, JSSB has the checking account, so that's where we write the checks to everybody for the preservation leases, and then Pliggett has a savings account. Well, anytime we need to do any type of transfers, Pliggett has a lockbox. Well, anytime we need to do any type of transfers, Pliggett has a lockbox. So we have to either write a check and then send it to a lockbox in Philadelphia, wait to see that that's actually gone through, and then we have to get Pliggett and write a check from Pliggett once that's gone through, and it's a process. It takes a little bit of time. So we looked at what would happen if we established everything in one bank, had a checking and savings, and then could do transfers within that so that that fund stays its own item, but within it, we can make those transfers to get a higher rate in the savings account, and when we need to write checks, we make a transfer and write the checks. So we reached out to a bunch of banks, and I don't know if there was a vacation happening or...
They don't care. They print money in Washington DC and they explode it out to these banks, so they don't need our money.
I, I was very surprised. We did not, we gave about a two-week period to get back to us, and the only one that did was First National Bank.
And they are a newer bank relationship with us already.
They were excited about it, yes. So the staff recommends that we close the Pliggett account because all the checks have been cashed for this year from the open space leases. So we're at a point right now where nothing else would be coming in or going out, and closing the JSSB account and putting all the money that's in each of those accounts into FNB in a checking and savings.
About FDIC insurance?
Yes, they're covered.
Are we exceeding that limit or not?
We have Act 72 compliance. They pool assets together, and that is, that provides a coverage that goes above and beyond that.
How much?
Zach, can you explain Act 72 compliance a little bit more for me? Putting you on the spot.
I'm actually not super familiar with Act 72, so if you give me a second.
And I, I seem to maybe recall some...
What was the particular question?
The FDIC insurance limits the amount of money that's protected or insured against bank failure and loss. Given these tumultuous times, I think we should be careful that we have our money spread around or make sure that we are covered by the FDIC so that the township does not lose anything. In other words, you don't put all your eggs in one basket because if you drop it, they're all broken, so.
Because we would have over 600, around $600,000.
Yeah.
Which we have at...
MNT right now, too.
Okay.
So we do have MNT, we still have Pliggett accounts, we have JSSB still.
But what is the upper limit for the act whatevers?
It, it, I can't, I don't know how to explain it other than it, we're covered by the fact that they almost insure all of our assets together through other municipalities as like an insurance policy that goes beyond FDIC. So it's, whatever we have in there is covered.
Believe that, I'll tell you another one.
I'll get you, like, okay. Zach's looking it up. I'll get you the, the better definition.
Why are these two accounts divided in the first place?
Um, I...
I don't think we can answer that. Maybe, yeah.
I don't have a problem with what you're talking about, Dylan. I just want to make sure the people's money is covered.
Sure. And so we're, I guess regardless, we could still probably make the motion pursuant that the coverage is there.
Yep. I make a motion and we do it pursuant that the coverage is there.
Okay, so the motion is to authorize closing the open space preservation accounts with Pliggett and JSSB and open a savings and checking account for open space preservation funds with First National Bank pursuant that the monies are adequately insured.
Fully covered.
Mm-hmm. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Bob. Any discussion? And we can have follow-up on that.
I know our manager will take care of it.
Oh, yeah, she will.
Yes, so it's Act 72, and it basically, government entities deposit monies and the financial institution pledges collateral for the deposit to the extent the deposit exceeds the FDIC insurance limits. So one of my first questions to any bank when they submit any proposal is, are you Act 72 compliant? And will our accounts be covered? And this was, yes, we are, we have, there's reports that we can ask for specifically if you'd like that, but they have a requirement...
Toaster.
They have a municipal services branch that stays Act 72 compliant.
I seem to recall, because I actually read the contract with FNB Bank whenever I went to sign, it was a lot of language, but I do seem to recall something around that as well, but...
Financial institutions pledge collateral on a pooled basis to secure public deposits in excess of the FDIC insurance limits.
Well, do they all fail at the same time? I guess we're all right, so.
Yep.
All right, well...
They all go at the same time, we're all going down.
We are, we're all going down, that's very true.
Well, just clear it with Zach there, and if you do that, I'm okay with it, so.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, eyes have it.
Before we move on, I wanted to wait until after to vote on that. I just want Denise, if you could do me a favor, while I'm on this board, we, if we could not approach First Commonwealth for anything, that's my employer.
I'd take that.
Just, I, I understand that I could recuse from things, but let's just stay away from it as far, as much as we can.
Sure.
So I would appreciate that.
I, I appreciate that as well. Thank you. We will make sure that in the, while you're on the board, that's something that we just take off the table.
Yeah. It does disappoint me that they did not get back to you. I might have to send a few emails about that. Come on, guys, really? But anyway.
All right. I think that is it for new business, so we will go to department reports. Does anyone have any questions about treasures report, tax collector, building code, or anything of note that Denise you would like to point out?
Um, I do have a couple of things. Let me pull up the manager's report.
Sure, take your time.
I wanted to say, we did receive a presentation from Mark Vogel at the planning agency, and he gave us updates on everything that was going on with the census, and we find, we have some good numbers. So Half Moon Township has had a population from the 2010 census of 2,667 for years. We now are at 2,790. We increased by 123 people or 4.6% growth.
That's in 10 years, right?
10 years.
Okay.
All right. Um, we received our volunteer fire relief monies. That was a little bit lower than projected. We had figured about 18,000, we received about 16,000. We had that meet and greet event again, that was absolutely wonderful. Thank you for coming out and supporting that. Our business insurance renewals have come through. I signed the policies and will receive the documentation soon. We now have umbrella coverage, which we didn't have in the past, which is highly recommended. And we have, terrorism insurance was just a small amount. It was, I think, 100, $120, so that was well worth it. We discussed the need for cyber policies as well in the future. We have some work to do on our end, but there seems to be a general trend that cyber policies are being paid out at a large amount right now because there's a lot of malware attacks and there's a lot of ransomware. And they're getting more and more expensive, and some carriers are considering not carrying them. So we looked into it. It's, it's a large amount, so I'm not sure how we're going to approach that, but we will take some more precautions in securing files. Overall, I believe we have about a $1,000 increase, just over that, $1,500 increase, and we have an additional thousand, or I'm sorry, million dollars in coverage.
Wow. That's awesome.
Will we back up our files every night, every week, every month?
We have, so all of our files are cloud-based, so...
Don't tell me the cloud.
Well, that's...
We need a hard drive somewhere and we can store this.
Somebody else has the hard drive for us.
There's redundancies?
Yes, but the problem is, the cloud is not secure. The cloud has people digging through it all the time. I got a very good...
What cloud do you use?
It doesn't matter which cloud it is.
True, it does. There, there's ethical responsibilities.
So that's okay. What question, sorry, what question are you asking?
It's not a question, it's just a statement of fact. I think we ought to have a hard drive.
We do have...
Somewhere that we download our stuff into periodically, so if we are attacked and the cloud's destroyed for whatever reason, that we can load those files back into our system and keep on going. Because people think stuff's secure, but it ain't secure. Nothing is secure on the internet.
So let Denise finish now, go ahead.
We have redundancies in place.
Good, that's what I wanted to hear.
Good. Awesome. It's called business continuity. Something happens, you can still operate.
Yes.
All right. Um, that was something from your manager's report. Is there anything else?
We received CPR and AED training for the entire staff, College Township. Some of their staff joined us, and that happened on seven, on September 13th. That's good for three years.
Wonderful.
So the entire staff is now certified.
Wonderful.
Cog started their budget sessions. The dates are there. They're been, they've been sending links to the different sessions for Zoom as well, and we're continuing with the budget that's coming up. Now, I do have a concern, and this is what I wanted to bring up. We moved the budget meetings to October 6th start, which was three weeks earlier than what we had planned at the back end towards it, and canceled those meetings and moved them up. The, it's incredibly early, and not all the data may be available. We, we rely on the real estate assessed value to come out. They do their collections in September so that information doesn't come out until mid-October usually.
So you want to push all the budget meetings?
No, we've advertised the budget meetings and we can start, but we may not be starting with the general fund.
Oh, that's okay. I was going to say, start with what we have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we use those calculations to determine our tax income, so they're going to be subject to minor changes when we go through, so we'll have to go back and revisit some of them possibly when we get those updated numbers.
We can bang out most of the hard work.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, because most of these items are things that are year-to-year and will pretty much stay the same, you know? We can tweak things, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
When you get the proper numbers, we can go back and make adjustments.
There may be a need for a meeting for the...
And we scheduled, what, four meetings?
We scheduled four, and then I think five. There's one that's, that's necessary.
I don't know why.
It's just placeholders. But yeah, yeah. And if we do need it, at least we have it scheduled.
Because you have to advertise them.
You have to advertise.
So if you advertise them all at once and you give yourself enough room, you can always cancel them if you don't need them.
That's what we do, we'll cancel.
It's less expensive.
It's sunshine law stuff.
Okay. Anything else?
Um, no, other than that, everything has been...
Pretty good.
Good.
That's good. Any questions about any of the reports or anything that you all have? Okay. Next up, supervisor reports. Bob, anything of note?
Um, just some quick things from the executive committee the other day. The facilities committee that was ad hoc is going permanent.
Yep.
And they, they are looking into what to do at the end of the cog building lease. It's potential for purchasing the building, but the lease is very vague, so they have to, it, the way Eric explained it was, the end of the lease kind of doesn't really say what happens, you know, at the, so they need some legal review on that. HR committee has been COVID vaccine, COVID vaccine, COVID vaccine topic. Ways to encourage the cog employees to get vaccinated who haven't. We've been researching numerous different incentive programs. We are not currently looking to instate any organization-wide mandate for the employees to get vaccinated because we're already exceeding a rate of 80, 80%.
Wonderful.
Um, and in trying to instate an intrusive mandate to ultimately get maybe 10 more people in the, in the, in the center region of how 200,000 people vaccinated, it's not worth it. So we're, we're not even pursuing that. And then over Bald Eagle Cog, good news, we've got our brush truck. You've heard about it tonight. I don't know if you guys have seen pictures of it.
It looks awesome.
It's a beast.
Yeah.
They're still waiting for the retractable, um...
Running gorks.
Running gorks, thank you. Ladders, basically, because the thing sits this high up in the air and you got to get a running start to get in it. They are backordered. They can use the truck right now, they just have to help each other run it out. So that's in service, and the Port Matilda Emergency Medical Service also acquired their second ambulance.
Wonderful.
We got a, I, I think it was a 2005. It has about 70,000 miles on it. It cost approximately $14,000, which is a bargain, considering the brand-new one was $150,000. So I'm not sure if that's in service or not yet. I know it had to be sent off for recertification and some upfitting of some more modern equipment, but if it's not already in service, it will be soon, so we're back to two ambulances, which is great news for the community. So that's all I have.
Speaking of those, uh, I can never remember, days and years go by, have we heard from all of the fire services and EMS? Because we would typically invite them to get a little report of what was going on, and I'm wondering if it's prior to budget time. Didn't we always kind of have them here at some point?
Yeah.
And I, I don't know if you can double-check to see. I know we did this past summer have a couple, but just to make sure, we kind of check off the list that we've seen and heard from everybody.
Yes, what I actually do is, I, for the donations that they want for the equipment requests, how they want that divvied out, they are required, and they're, they figured it out. August 1st is my deadline.
Okay.
So they all know that if you don't get me your budget and your request by August 1st, forget it. So I have some numbers and everything I can share with you for, they're required to provide me with the calls, and I have that information I could share out. I can also ask them, my intent was to ask them to come and show up at, during a slower time rather than budget time, since I've got those numbers in request already.
Okay. Yeah, if you want to just like throw that as an attachment or a report, that's fine with me. I mean, we don't have to talk about it necessarily, but I would like to see the numbers.
Do know that John Witherite, the, the chief over there, is willing to come talk to us anytime.
Right, I know.
So if you ever want to see, see him, all we have to do is reach out and he'll be here.
Perfect.
So same thing with Dave, and I cannot remember his last name, oh my God, excuse me, if you're watching, Dave. The gentleman who was in charge over the EMTs, it's same. If, if we ever want to talk to him to pick his brain about anything, all we have to do is reach out.
Okay. Um, let's see. I have only one report from the Climate Action Sustainability Committee. Pam Adams has done an amazing amount of work. It is really hard to grasp just the amount of research, putting together data and information to create this climate action sustainability plan. It's an implementation plan. It will be coming to the general forum. We got the draft of it. It's about 50 pages long, but it's really well put together to try and get a sense of how we got to where we are, some of the patterns that we're looking at doing inventories, trying to see what the, our primary concerns are related to sustainability in the center region specifically, and then some high-level goals. And these are not things that, you know, anyone is holding anyone to. These are attempts to reduce greenhouse gas and all those kind of things that definitely, and, and the way that she presented it, it's very pertinent and relevant to specifically center region. So it's not just this sort of theoretical thing that isn't, you can't relate to. The plan really relates to specific activities and things that are happening in the center region. So it is very well put together. It's a lot, but it is going to be coming to the general forum for review, yes.
Pam will be coming to our township on the 14th to discuss the climate action plan and adaptation plan review.
Lovely. So it is going to the general forum first, and then I think it goes out to the municipalities, to the municipalities, which is when she'll be coming here.
Yes.
So I do highly recommend whenever you get that plan, at least peruse the high-level topics, the presentation of it. Um, again, Half Moon is only going to be able to implement so much, but there's a lot of different things that you wouldn't even consider in there that residents really want to participate in, um, with, in regards to sustainability and, and building practices and things like that. So there really is a lot to it. Um, before she gets here, mid-October, take a peek, at least review some of those high-level things. And then we'll go from there. So that was it for.
I just wanted to add, speaking of the building practices, there are simple things that builders can do now with, um, with home builds.
Yeah.
Um, even if you're not getting the solar panels on the roof, they can pre-install the chute that you need to come down from the roof and that kind of thing.
To prepare.
Which only costs a couple hundred dollars on the, on the half-a-million-dollar home you're building. But yes, it's to prepare for you or whoever may, down the road, want to put the, um, the panels on your roof. You don't have to run it down the outside of the house and it looks bad. It goes down through the inside.
Lovely.
So, you know.
All kinds of little things.
Yes.
And there is also, um, a group called SUN, Solar United Neighbors. And it is, uh, a co-op type effort to get interested residents in solar together to learn more about it, potentially do group ordering, group installing, those kind of things, so that each individual resident kind of isn't on their own trying to figure these things out. So it's an effort to try and bring together people who are interested in it. There is no monetary, um, requirement at all for it. It's just really an interest group and a, a way to contact out to installers and, uh, providers to, to help do that in a more, uh, I guess collaborative way. So those are the couple things happening.
That's awesome.
Yep. Uh, I don't have any other updates. Anyone else?
Corey prepared, um, T-Lu and, I don't know what we're calling it, Lucy or.
Lucy now, land use and infrastructure.
Corey prepared some, um, updates from those meetings.
Community infrastructure.
And I can send that out as well when I send out the, um, fire and EMS numbers.
Wonderful. Anything else for the good and welfare? All right. Seeing no other business, meeting adjourned.